One to this meeting of the Westwood Planning Board. All of our meetings are recorded by Westwood Media Center and broadcast live on local cable television channel Comcast 12 and Verizon 42. Our meetings are also available in the Westwood Media Center YouTube channel and they are livestreamed. If you're having any trouble logging into Zoom, please go to zoom.us, click on join meeting, and enter the meeting ID, or more easily go to the town website and there's a link on the town website with the agenda and it ran all the materials and so that link will take you directly into the Zoom meeting. Because we're meeting remotely by Zoom, all of our votes must be taken by a roll call of all planning board members. While you are unmuted, please turn off your cellphone ringer. We'll begin the meeting with only the board members and town staff unmuted and on video. And as the chair recognizes individuals to speak, we will unmute them. Board members may choose to mute themselves when they're not speaking in order to minimize background noise. Tonight's meeting, we will have, we have two public hearings and then we'll discuss our annual reorganization of the board and our work plan for 2021, 22. I start, we'll start each agenda item by asking the applicant to present their request. And during that presentation, I'll recognize board members who raise their hands to ask questions. I'll try to keep an eye on the video there. That has been helpful, I think, if you press the hand raise button. And then I'll ask if there are any staff comments or peer review reports, anything extra to add. Then for portions of the meeting where a public comment is invited, I will invite attendees on Zoom to raise their hands and then we will recognize them and unmute them to speak. After individuals who wish to speak have spoken, I will review the Q and A section of the Zoom meeting and read any comments that have not been addressed and invite further participation. If there are any, if there are individuals who are dialing in on a telephone line only, then we'll ask them to press star nine so that they can be unmuted to speak also. Everyone who's, all the residents and participants who speak, we've asked you to please identify yourself and your address before speaking and address your comments through the chair. We will allow all those who wish to speak the opportunity, but we may limit repetitive or off-topic comments. So let's see, are we, Ellen, are you able to? I see you, are you, are you able to unmute?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Yeah, no, the minute I signed in, it gave me an error saying your audio needs to be rebooted. So I'm glad it's working.
All right. So we'll start off with a roll call vote to everyone here. So Christopher Pfaff, if you could just raise your hand. Robert Gotti.
Here.
Ellen Rawlings. And Kate Nguyen.
Here.
And I'm David Atkins. I'll be chairing the meeting tonight. And I want to welcome our newest members. We have Kate Nguyen and Ellen Rawlings are joining us for the first time tonight. And look forward to a productive meeting. So the first item on the agenda, Abby, are there any changes to the agenda?
There's just one change. I had put on item number three, the performance guarantee for recessed way subdivision of Far East Road on. That is not ready to go forward tonight. There is some more, more work that was still needed to work with the applicant. So there's nothing you need to do on that. There's no action before you tonight, but I expect I'll keep working with them to hopefully come back at your next meeting in June.
Great. Oh, and also I want to recognize our associate board member, Stephen Olinoff. And our town staff who are here, Abby McCabe, our town planner, and Pat Ahern, our town council, and Jessica Cole is our recording secretary, who takes the great meeting minutes. And the other person on here, WMC Paul, that's Westwood Media Center. So let's see, the first, first item on the agenda is 25 Winter Street, which is a public hearing, and it's an earth materials movement permit. Is the applicant here ready to present?
I'm just letting the applicant in, in now.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, just give me one sec. Okay, hello. Hi, um, do you want me to start?
Yes, if you could summarize.
Yeah. Okay. Um, yeah, so I'm Jillian, Jillian Carroll Carey, and I'm here because I'm planning on developing on 25 Winter Street in Westwood, a single-family residential home. And I'm, you know, filing an earth material movement permit because of this development. We will, while we're proposing to bring in about 1,000 yards of fill to mitigate the slope, or the topography really, between the street and the lot, you know, for a driveway and to be conducive for a home. You know, bringing in this fill will make it a lot safer over there. It's going to be similar in size and scope to the homes that we've built on Winter Street. And bringing in this fill will be very similar to 35 Winter Street that we filed an earth material movement permit for. That one required, I believe, 800 yards and this one's just a little bit more at 1,000. And I have sent and uploaded the new plan after reviewing some of the Beta Group's recommendations
So I just pulled up the new plan. This one was just sent in a, you know, a few moments ago, so I didn't have a chance to review it, but there were some recommendations from staff, from Beta Group for some plan updates for things like, you know, adding some erosion controls, adding some notes on the plan.
Yeah, like, you know, putting on there like how much fill, I guess that was just in our description and not in the, on the actual plan. There was a few other notes as well. I can go back, my engineer put it together to see exactly what he added. Yeah. Um, yeah, so they, they wanted us to add in the drainage basins in the back, which we did, and there were some utilities in the back of the lot that just didn't show on the plan. They, you know, it was a well that used to irrigate what's now going to be, you know, the town-owned soccer field. It's just not in operation, but it is shown on the plan. And there used to be power for that well as well, so he has that shown now. Then towards the front of the plan, you'll see, yeah, right there. The Beta Group was asking about the town drainage system and to provide detail for the drainpipe installation and for proposed flared end section. That is, and you can see it's proposed there, that we're no longer doing that work. I guess Todd Corchen in the Highway Department has spoken with Dan Green, who is the current owner of the lot, and this is no longer going to be occurring. They're just going to bury a large drainage well about 18 inches from where this, this drainage currently drains onto this lot, because it's town water, so it's going to stay in the right-of-way rather than coming on to this property. So he shows that. It says that, you know, we didn't, you know, include the proposed planting, so I uploaded a separate landscape plan. As I mentioned, the quantity of the earth materials now on the plan, and, you know, what type of material. It says to provide the final location of the exported material, but I think that might be a mistake. You know, the, the location, it's going to be imported and the location's going to be here at 25 Winter Street. It also, they mentioned that the renderings that, you know, they rightfully so noticed that the renderings were for a three-car garage, but then the description was for a two-car. It's a two-car. The renderings were old. It's not going to be a three-car. So that's been updated. We mitigated those erosion controls. That's pretty much, oh, and then also wanted some driveway dimensions and contours.
All right.
Dave?
Yes.
Before we get to questions, or you haven't explained why we have an associate member here.
Yes. So Mr. Olinoff, I'm going to activate as an associate member to participate in the second special permit hearing because Mr. Gotti is going to recuse himself from that. On this one, I believe, we're all just, it's a regular.
Okay, so Steve isn't participating in this one? This special permit?
Not voting on this one, no.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, or put it out there for everyone.
This one's just a regular hearing, this was not a special permit.
Well, earth material movement, special permit.
Or it's not a, it's not a special permit.
Not as, I got you.
So let's see, are there, Abby, any, any other staff comments or?
The only, the only other staff comment was from the police department that recommended a police detail for during the construction, during the import of the material. So we would ask for the applicant to pay for that expense to have the police detail just during those specific times.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's no problem. Yeah, for sure.
All right. And like the other, the conditions, you have like a draft, conditions have, have you been able to review those with, with the applicant here?
Yes, they're, yeah, they're pretty straightforward and in line with what we had previously adhered to for the other permits. And yeah, we're in agreement about those.
Are there questions, board members? Yes, Ms. Rawlings?
I had just one quick question about the request for the waiver for the stormwater drainage report, two quick questions about that. In the waiver request, it states that there's only 5,000 square feet being disturbed, but I noticed in, you know, when you answered a question from the conservation agent, you said there are 20,000 square feet being disturbed. Not sure if that makes a difference as far as granting the waiver, but I was curious, which is it? And my other question was, did either Beta or the conservation agent have an opinion on whether or not that would be a waiver that would be a good waiver to grant?
Um, that's a good question. Yeah, it is 20,000 square feet that is being disturbed and we will be filing an administrative land disturbance permit. As far as the stormwater goes, I know that we are providing like a full drainage for this development. I might have to ask my engineer about, about that.
Right, I can help respond to this application. If it's less, if the total disturbance is over 5,000 square feet but under half an acre, it requires a stormwater, what we call a land disturbance permit from the conservation agent. So that application is still needed. But then the planning board's, what we call our EIDR, Environmental Impact Design Review, one of the standard requirements for all applications is a full stormwater drainage report. That's not technically required under the state stormwater laws for a single-family residential, but we do review it under our local bylaw with the Conservation Commission. So it is a waiver request from providing the full calculations, but there is still a stormwater review largely with the conservation agent or Conservation Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any, any other questions from board members?
Abby, since we just got the, we just had our first look at the revised plan and you have knowledge of what Beta was listing, are you satisfied that what Beta has listed has been addressed in this new plan?
I, I think so, but my recommendation would be, be the same as my request to make sure there's the site, updated site plan, site plan that includes all these items. Since I already have it, I can just easily double-check that after, after you vote on it, but I would want to just double-check to make sure everything was included in this most recently revised version.
All right, any other, seeing no other, Mr. Gotti?
Just one, Abby, were there any concerns from, whether it's Chief Silva or Todd, in terms of the location of the driveway and garage on the property relative to the corner? Is there, is there adequate sort of clearance and visibility and everything as you make that turn? Because I know that we're having more of a 90-degree turn put in there. Is that still happening? Because I'm just concerned as somebody comes whooping around that corner.
I didn't receive any comments about that specifically. I think a curb cut will still be required from public work, so they'd like to double-check that, but I did not hear any comments that affect with this application.
Abby, do you, sorry to dovetail with that, do you have any idea when that work is going to be done by DPW? The change of that intersection, Clapper Tree and Winter?
It's ongoing, right? You know, it started and I think it'll continue through the next few months.
Because cars making a 90-degree turn, taking a right off Clapper Tree into Winter will be going far slower than they are now, where they're, they're banking the turn and they're not slowing down. So the, if they finish this driveway before that, there might be some, some difficulty there, but I think it does meet the site, site distance requirement. Otherwise, I think the building inspector would have, would have caught that, flagged it right away, right?
Well, I don't know if that was a question for me, but, um...
Sorry, no, I was actually just confirming with Abby about the site distance. Has that been addressed by the building department?
I mean, the building.
We don't hear that on this.
Staff did review this, you know, the building commissioner said he didn't have any concerns or comments.
Okay. All right, I don't see anyone else raising their hand. It's, this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone, any of the attendees who would like to speak, please raise your hand. Do we have anyone on the phone only, or can we tell?
There's no one calling in on the phone.
Okay. So I'm not, I'm not seeing anyone else who wishes to speak. Abby, would you like to, do you want to go over the conditions, summarize the conditions and the waivers and set us up for, we need to vote on the waivers, we need to vote on the approval with the conditions, and then we would need to close the public hearing?
Okay, so I think the waivers were the standard application waivers, which was for the drainage report, the traffic study, and the presentation model, and the exterior lighting plan, which are essentially the standard requirements for all environmental impact design reviews.
Is there any, any discussion of the waivers? Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the waiver request for 25 Winters, Winter Street.
Like in that?
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? We'll take a roll call vote. Mr. Pfaff?
Yes.
Mr. Gotti?
Yes.
Ms. Nguyen?
Yes.
Ms. Rawlings?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so you grant the waivers. Abby, you want to summarize the conditions?
Sure. And in your packet, also provided to the applicant, there was a list of nine or 10 suggested conditions. The first one is the applicant shall submit an updated plan in response to Beta's memo prior to the earthwork beginning. We have that tonight, but I would double-check that after tonight's meeting. Condition two was about the truck routes. So the primary purpose of this is to regulate where the import of the material is going. So my suggestion was for all trucks carrying the earth material to or from the project site shall be required to access the property from, from High Street, you know, from 109, and turn onto Pond Street near the Stana School, and then turn onto Clapper Tree Street to turn on Winter Street. We think that's the most direct access to have the most impact on the least amount of, least amount of roads. Condition three would be, is about the hours, trying to avoid the, the busy times with the coordination with the school, with the pickup and the drop-off hours. So to not take place during that early morning and the afternoon pickup and drop-off. Number four is the applicant shall provide a police detail at the applicant's expense. Five is for the existing pavement on Winter Street to be protected from damage of the equipment and material. Condition six is to have a construction entrance to pick up any dirt that may come off the trucks to make sure it's staying on the project site. Condition seven is related to the hours of construction, so that's, you know, site work and construction cannot be between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and only noon to 7:00 PM on Sundays. Condition eight is related to the applicant's responsibility of filing any other permits such as with the conservation agent. Number 19 is that the applicant's responsible for repairing any damage that may be caused to the public roads. And condition 10 is to keep a copy of the project plans and planning board's approval on-site at all times.
All right, thanks, Abby. And just to confirm, so the, the traffic will be off of 109, like, does that make sense for the applicant, like, the trucks are coming from 109 versus Norwood or something?
Yeah, I was thinking Winter Street might be viable if, I don't know where they're coming from. Where, where's the truck coming from?
Yeah, that's kind of my question.
Um, like, the actual material is coming from Bridgewater Sand and Stone. So we can make it work, you know, however you guys want those trucks to come in, I can just let them know.
Now, Chris, for you, did you have a thought? I had a thought, which was not.
Well, Winter Street is less impactful to Westwood residents. You're not dealing with Sheehan School or anything, but I don't know if that makes sense for the trucks to go circum, to go navigate throughout Norwood to get to Winter Street. I, if, I don't know.
Um, yeah, I don't know.
They're coming from Bridgewater, they're on 24, right? So they're going to come up either 24 to 128 or go down to 495, up 95.
I would think we're speculating, but either way, they're going to come off of 128 probably. So that's, if you make them go through Norwood, I would think that would basically mean that they're going to go down Washington Street to get to Norwood and Winter, so that's kind of pushing the problem in a different direction. So it's, yeah, it sounds like 109 makes the most sense unless anybody else has a thought.
Well, Abby, you have them, if they're taking 109 off 128, they won't go anywhere near the Sheehan School. They would get off at Pond and then take a left on Clapper Tree by the temple.
Right, I was trying to avoid them from going, you know, from the property and taking the right onto Clapper Tree Street.
You're talking about them leaving the property with empty trucks?
Yeah, or, or coming from that way too, coming from, that would be east, you know, the east side of Clapper Tree.
Oh, you mean from, like, by Manhattan Street?
Yeah.
You're trying to avoid that?
Yeah, that's what, I mean, that's what.
I think it's safer. I think it's safer to have them make the left onto Pond up by Sheehan as opposed to trying to make that as traffic is oncoming on that curve, just the ability to go from a standstill to accelerated across is probably more of a challenge.
Or out of Bridgewater, they just go 495 up to 109. They shoot all the way from the west that way, rather than go up to 128. That's the, that's the only other way into town. So, all right, does the applicant have a preference?
Uh, no, I just, however you guys want us to do it.
Okay, it's on our shoulders, okay.
I'm, I'd rather not have them passing in front of an elementary school. I hear what you're saying about, I hear what people are saying about how hard it is to take the left at the other end of Pond, but I prefer that they not go in front of an elementary school, especially at the end of Oak Street.
Well, does the applicant know when this will begin?
Um, probably in about, I'd say, within 60 days, but not, you know, probably.
So you're talking July sometime?
Yeah, mid-July or autumn.
And how long will the, will the, will the trucking last?
Three days.
So school will be out?
Yeah.
In July? So the, the issue of kids congregating or kids being there for purposes of school anyway won't be an issue in July. I hear what you're saying, Kate, but I...
I don't know what the schools are running in, I don't know what Sheehan's running in July, I totally hear you, Chris.
Yeah, I don't either, but I, I mean, that is the only way from 128. They either take a left off Pond and go to the temple, or they take a left onto Pond at Sheehan. Or we have them go through Norwood somehow to get to Winter Street.
They do that, they come up 138 through Stoughton and then cut through Norwood onto Winter Street. That would avoid.
It might be easier just to take 95 to the Napanza Street exit in Norwood instead of going through the backroads of Stoughton.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
That's really not our issue. How they get to there is really up to them. But once they enter Westwood, it's, you know, we need to prescribe which way to, which way we want them to come from. Does the board have any strong feelings? I mean, I know Kate mentioned she didn't want them going past the elementary school.
Haven't we mitigated that with the condition on the hours?
Well, it's the summer and we don't know, like, what activities are going on, what time, so there's hours.
Kind of out the window for July.
I mean, yeah, I guess it boils down to that. Do you want to, do you want to have it, for Westwood, I mean, thinking only of Westwood, it's, it's a short drive on Winter Street, you know, but logically, it seemed like 109 is where, I mean, there's, there's dozens or hundreds of Truska trucks going by every day anyway, so it's where all the trucks go, so.
And how many trips are we talking about? I read that somewhere, 20 to 100 or something like that, depending on the size of the truck. I forget that. It really doesn't matter, the, the route is the route. I personally, I, I see value in all, all the ways we just prescribed, but I, I guess I'd have no reason to, to explain why Abby's way is, is not the best way. I think it works, they all work, all three options work.
Oh, we have to motion them to...
Does any, yeah, does anyone have a problem with what Abby, Abby has written down here?
No, I just, I, I think we've got the message across though that we are sensitive to how this traffic is going to impact the neighborhood and, and we just want, we want it to go very well for everybody.
Well, I'll make a motion that we accept the earth material movement request with the 10 conditions noted by Ms. McCabe, including the route of operation.
Second.
All right, there is a motion from Mr. Pfaff. Alright, there is a motion from Mr. Pfaff, seconded by Ms. Nguyen to approve the Earth Materials Movement Permit. Is there any further discussion? Is there any other input? Then we'll have a roll call vote. Mr. Pfaff?
Yes.
Ms. Rawlings?
Yes.
Mr. Gotti?
Yes.
Ms. Nguyen?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So we approve here materials movement permit. And could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing on 25 Winter Street.
Second.
Alright, there's a motion and second, no further discussion. We'll have a roll call vote. Mr. Pfaff?
Yes.
Ms. Nguyen?
Yes.
Mr. Gotti?
Yes.
And Ms. Rawlings?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, so the public hearing is closed. And thank you to the applicant. Thanks for responding to all the conditions and questions from Beta. And good luck.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alright, see, I'm trying to mix things up here. I'm calling on people in random ways from the screen. I used to have a a post-it note where I wrote everybody's name down, but so I wouldn't forget anybody, but. Alright, the next item on our agenda is 808 High Street. This is a a special permit for AT&amp;T and T-Mobile cellular tower at First Baptist Church of High Street here. And this is in the Wireless Overlay District. And as we've mentioned, as mentioned earlier, Steve Olunoff is an associate member of the Planning Board. I'm activating him or designating him to participate in this special permit hearing in the event that it needed to be continued or something like that. We need to have all of the people here for subsequent, so they can all participate because these kinds of special permits require a four out of five votes. So if we, if, for example, one of our board members were to say, leave the board, then we. So with that, I will turn it over to the applicant to present.
Abby, just text me when you guys are done.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me okay? Hi, my name is Michael Dolan, and I'm an attorney from the law firm of Brown Rudnick here on behalf of the co-applicants Crown Castle and New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, whom you probably know as AT&amp;T. Crown Castle is a national communications infrastructure company, and AT&amp;T is a national wireless telecommunications provider. ATT AT&amp;T holds FCC licenses to operate a wireless network throughout the United States, including here in Westwood. As you all, as many of you may recall, in December of 2020, the Planning Board issued to AT&amp;T and EIDR approval to attach antennas to the existing Crown-owned stealth flagpole located behind the parking lot in the rear of this subject property at 808 High Street and to install related ground equipment within the existing equipment compound. The design of the existing pole, however, is not sufficient for AT&amp;T's desired equipment installation, and their current installation is a temporary solution, as was referenced back in December, until Crown and AT&amp;T could design and permit a replacement pole that would better allow AT&amp;T to install its complete its complete antenna facility, which would help it address its full RF coverage needs. The subject property is located in the Wireless Communications Overlay District, and the existing pole at the site, which was built to house T-Mobile's antennas, which are still located inside that pole, was permitted for 100 feet by a special permit and EIDR approval issued by the Planning Board on August 10, 2001. Several years back, the top six or eight feet or so of the 100-foot tower was removed for maintenance purposes and it was never restored. So Crown is looking now to, in consultation with the the needs of AT&amp;T, is looking to rebuild the stealth flagpole facility to its previously approved and constructed 100-foot height and with the additional width, which will allow for all of the needed antennas and related equipment of both AT&amp;T and Crown to be located and camouflaged within the pole. The new pole is actually 98 feet with an ornamental ball at the top of it, which makes the total height of the structure 100 feet. As you know, wireless communication structures up to 100 feet are permitted under the town's wireless bylaw. The location of the replacement pole will be several feet away from the existing pole, and the new design will allow for an even better steffing and a more efficient antenna and equipment installation. AT&amp;T's antennas will be located within the replacement pole at a centerline height of 94 feet, and their installation will play a key part in AT&amp;T, AT&amp;T's wireless network in Westwood and also play a critical role in AT&amp;T's FirstNet Emergency Communication System, which is relied upon by Westwood Fire and Police. T-Mobile's antennas will be moved from this existing facility to the new facility, new flagpole at a centerline height of 68 feet, and their ground equipment will continue to be located in the existing fenced ground compound. AT&amp;T's ground equipment will be located in a proposed bump out of the compound area, as is shown in the plans. As you can see in the photo simulations included with our application, like the existing tower, the proposed tower is tucked back behind the Pilgrim Church parking lot and is not visible from Main Street or from nearly the entire surrounding area due to its setback from the street, as well as because of the significant dense tree canopy all around the the pole. Many of the properties around the this property as well are either town or conservation properties, which further adds to the factors mitigating the visual impact of the facility. You can also see from the photo simulations that the current and proposed facility look very similar. And from any distance at which it could even be seen, that would be merely a negligible visual impact. It should be noted that the replacement pole will be able to house the internal antennas of two other wireless providers, which is encouraged by the bylaw. So the applicants for this proposal are seeking a special permit and EIDR approval, as well as certain waivers included in our application, including a waiver from the three-foot diameter limit on tower facilities. Specifically as to the latter, the diameter of the pole may be increased by the Planning Board if the increase will have no significant adverse impact on the town and surrounding residential properties. And as I mentioned and as demonstrated in the photo simulations, the proposed pole will be of minimal visibility and its di- diameter will have no visual impact. So with that, that's the presentation I wanted to make, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Dolan. Abby, did we have anything else from the staff comments or?
Um, I don't have any staff comments at at this time. I suggest you might want to take a look at the coverage maps in in more detail. I could share my screen if you'd like, Michael, or if if anyone from your team would want to walk us through that, I could pull up the plans. If the planning board has any specific questions, I could share the screen and pull that up.
Yeah, so with me here tonight is an RF engineer, Sohail Usmani, who can explain AT&amp;T's RF needs in the area. As you know, this facility was at the Thurston Middle School, providing excellent coverage in Westwood. We were asked to move that facility, have done so to this current location, which is providing okay RF coverage, but not optimal for the residents of Westwood or Fire and Police, so we're looking for this to be housed in this new pole. But I can turn this over to Sohail, who can add a little more color to our RF needs and the coverage objective. Sohail, are you are you able to join us?
Yes, hi, Mike, I'm here.
Okay, why don't you introduce yourself, your position, and just give us a quick walkthrough as to what our coverage objective is here and why this site is ideal for what we're looking for.
Okay. For the record, my name is Sohail Usmani. I work for C-Squared Systems, consulting for AT&amp;T. The address is 65 Dartmouth Drive in Auburn, New Hampshire. That's the work address. Um, okay. So there's five slides in the RF report. I can go through each one and explain what what they represent. The current slide that you see on screen now is just displaying all the locations that were used in preparing the predictions of the maps. So and and the blue lines just show the radial radial distances from each location, so the the black stars, black stars, they are on-air locations. So sites that are currently transmitting and are providing service to Westwood and the surrounding towns and neighborhoods. This is a, what you call a terrain or elevation map. It just shows it's helpful to put into perspective if there was a a giant or a bit a large obstruction or a hill, you know, natural elevation. In in this case, there is some amount of obstruction where MA 1233 sits the the black star north of the blue star. But that is an on-air location. So that may obstruct the coverage a little bit going to northeast. So this just gives you an idea of what the elevation looks like around the site. This slide shows the existing coverage with with the with the side MA 5806. Thank you. So that is the the existing site, MA 5806 with the black star, and I've used a black star because it's existing as of now. If you go to the next slide, that will show you that if I take that out, the MA 5806 side out, then let me step back a little bit. I I just missed something. The colors that you see on the screen, the green color and the orange, they represent in the green represents in-building or, you know, coverage that is considered to be very good for, if you're inside a building, if you're, you know, somewhere in a house or an office building. And it is sufficient to have good penetration. And you should be able to get good data rates and have, you know, good cellphone service for whatever purpose you you want to use the phone. The orange is slightly lower threshold coverage, but it's still good coverage, not as good as the green one. And, you know, it's primarily in vehicle, even inside, but you may not get as high data rates as you would in the, if you were in the green coverage area. The white areas that you see don't necessarily mean that there is no coverage, but it's just below those two thresholds, which are considered to be good reliable coverage by AT&amp;T. So when you took that MA 5806 site, how or when I, you know, I I took it out of my propagation, you see a a large white space where there was in that upper upper slide, you had a lot of it covered with the green and the orange. Yes, thank you. So go to the next one. That's where we get the proposed MA 2941, which is very next, you know, right adjacent to the existing MA 58 5806. And if you were to flip between the two, I know it's not easy scrolling the way, you know, but you'd be able to see that this covers, this gives you a little bit more coverage than the existing site. And it, you know, the the whole idea was to avoid creating any holes that the existing site is covering. But in this case, it's covering a little bit, a little bit more than our existing site, which is MA 5806. I might, that's that's about, that's about it. If there's any question, I'd be happy to.
And just to reiterate what Sohail was saying, there was the previous slide which showed that there is coverage there now, and that's from our temporary facility. And as the board knows, our approval was for one year because all along the the plan was that we'd move to a permanent facility, which would be even better looking than the existing one. As as you know, our facility on the existing, it's not in that photo there. That one just slightly predated our temporary facility. But our temporary facility bows out a bit. That old pole was one from 2001. Technologies have changed. Consumer demand for data and speed has changed, and the antennas have gotten a little bigger. So the old width and diameter just don't work anymore. And as you can see on the right-hand side there, that's the proposal we're going with. If you look at the left-hand photo, you can see up top that T-Mobile's antennas there actually, actually one notch down from there, yeah. Those bow out because they just don't fit in the old 2001 canister. And I know they would like more space as well, and this new pole would be able to benefit them as well as us and also provide a sleek look going all the way up as opposed to a sleek look that is interrupted by bubbles sticking out. So that is the plan.
Is is it, is there going to be a flag on it? It just, I'm trying to.
Yeah, so we we are proposing a 12 by 18-foot flag, which is kind of the industry standard for this size facility. If the board, due to the location of this flagpole being so far back on the property and probably most people not even seeing a flag, if the board had any flexibility or desire to allow us to install it without the flag, we we would welcome that just because they're you know, in storms and things like that, the pole, the flag can blow pretty good, and there's trees in the area which are doing a good thing by shrouding the view of our pole. But by the same token, if one fell on the on the flag or things like that, it it's not perfect. Don't get me wrong, we can do it. But if if the board was agnostic to the flag, we would welcome it not being a requirement. But as I said, the plans do show a 12 by 18-foot flag if that's the board's desire.
Alright, thank you. Any thoughts, board members? Any questions?
Alright.
Go ahead.
Mr. Pfaff, go ahead.
I stopped by earlier today and noticed that the current pole there has numerous wires on the outside. Is that part of the temporary solution? Or is that the, has that always been like that?
I I don't believe it has always been like that, and I think it is most likely temporary, and the new facility, everything will be inside.
Okay. I personally, I I guess, having visited the site, it is very remote. You can't see it. We have had problems on I think it's the only other flagpole design we have in town at Morrison Field, where they actually have a flag, and they did run into problems with the flag constantly getting. where they actually have a flag and they did run into problems with the flag constantly getting snagged on trees and ripped and torn. And it did become a problem. There, there, I like the flag idea because there are people congregating and do see the top of the pole. They see the entire pole right there. But in this particular case, I personally don't have a problem with no flag because I see it being a maintenance problem. And the only people who are going to see it up there are the parishioners every Sunday and the people who might be dropping off at daycare throughout the week. But that's just my two cents.
Kate?
Thank you. I just wanted to say two things. One, I'm agnostic with the flag as well. I do think that the, the trees at this site are very tall. So, so I, I, I'm fine with no flag. It does sound a little bit like a recipe for disaster. But the one thing I did want to highlight is the, I was by the flag, the pole as well this morning. And it looks like the top of it is broken, like it's black at the top. It's kind of half-black at the top. And again, I don't know if that's part of the temporary solution, but what I wanted to say is I like that this will be painted a flat white. And I would like it to be consistently painted a flat white, no matter what needs to happen to this pole in the future. So that's all I had to say on that.
And, and I, I just want to add, thank you, Kate. The, the, the look of the pole is not ideal right now. I apologize for that. There was some maintenance that took place on the top of the pole and it was not necessarily replicated again thereafter because the thought was there's going to be a new solution coming up real soon. So hopefully, if we can get our approval and get this thing up, it'll look a heck of a lot better really soon.
Understood. And actually, I apologize. I did have one more question for you and I'm sure it's, the answer is in here. But the, the current situation is that the pole is outside of the fenced-in area. And will that be the case? People can just walk up to the pole?
So under the new design, the pole will be inside the equipment fenced-in compound.
Okay, that's what I assumed, but I just wanted to hear you say. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Kate. Steve?
Yeah, so I had originally concerns about the flag also. My original concerns were, you know, get a big flag, a pole like this. Sometimes the flag is too small, especially because it's getting wider and wider and it looks really dumb. And, and then you don't want the opposite way. You don't want these big, huge flags like they have on, you know, Route one, the auto mile kind of thing. So I think the solution of no flags is actually a very good one. And if, so I, I'll go with that one. So getting back to the, yeah, I did notice the fence now includes the, the tower. So that's very good. Took me a while to figure out where it is. So because you're expanding everything and putting the fence around everything, is that the reason why those trees are going to be removed?
Exactly. So the, the temporary ground equipment of AT&amp;T is not sufficient. So that's going to move over to the other side of the pole area. And then by moving the pole and trying to get it inside the enclosure, there are probably four or five trees that might have to be removed as shown on the plans.
Okay, so it's, it has nothing to do with the construction itself, getting in there to do it. It just has to do with where the fence is.
Correct.
I noticed there are two trees kind of like right on the fence. So is it possible to move that fence in just a little bit so we can save those trees?
I, I can talk to my client to see if there's a way to do that. I think the ones on the southerly side of the property though, they're going to, those could conceivably interfere with the tower, which doesn't look to be too far away, maybe, you know, six to eight feet away from it. So I, I think that might be a challenge. But some of the, some of the items on here that show what looked like a tree and being removed actually say existing shrub brush, shrub or bush to be removed. So it's really just a couple of trees right in the middle of the bump out to the compound and two or three right on the fence line, which I think they tried to make it as snug as possible. So unfortunately, I think leaving those could compromise the tower and the separation needed from objects like that.
All right. So that was my question. But so one obviously is very close to the tower. The, the other one on the corner, you know, the, there, that's really a distance from the tower. Could that one be saved? It's marked as.
Where it says it may need to be removed. Yeah, I, one hundred, one hundred percent. I'll ask my client if they could spare that tree and, you know, perhaps pull that in a little bit there. You know, the, the other thing too, is to the extent that this pole does have two other carriers or one other carrier in it, in the future, they likewise might need some ground equipment within this compound, which could conceivably mean that the compound area would have to be bumped out in that area that we might clip it. But let, let me have them do the very best they can to try to save that tree on the corner.
All right. And, and right, and the fence is six and a half feet, but I know that some of the cabling is at a height of seven feet. But that still won't be visible from outside.
Yeah, the, the wooden fence, it, it looks as though the walk-in cabinet is about six inches higher than the top of the fence, which, you know, from ground level would be just a negligible visual impact.
All right. So the only, the only thing I just have a statement in general to make, which is, and I think if Abby could put this in the, in, in the, the decision is normally, there are times when we've spent, you know, like a new hundred-foot tower, we've gone many, many sessions to to approve it. And we've had neighbors inputs and things like that. But that's, that's for a new tower. I think we need to emphasize this is a replacement of an existing tower, virtually the same squad, pack, just about the same size, just slightly wider. And so I think that's why we should, shouldn't have any trouble approving this. But in order not to set precedent on how fast we do this, I think we should just mention it in the, in the statement that, that the planning board is giving this approval because it is just a replacement of existing tower. So we don't set any precedent about, you know, getting everything done in one day kind of thing. And I think we certainly can wrap this up tonight.
Yeah, maybe Abby, maybe that would just be a finding that the proposed change is not significantly different than the visual impact from before. I mean, we might make a couple of findings anyway, but that might be a way to get that in there.
It's also significant when we, when we asked for the waivers, that we state that, that we're granting some of these waivers because it is, because we've already been through this whole process before and looking carefully, looking over, you know, how it shows from, from every viewpoint. So further scrutiny is no longer needed.
All right. Any, anyone else? Ms. Rawlings, Ellen?
I, I also have no issue with not putting the flag on the top of the pole. I think there's ample reason to delay that or, you know, just discard that altogether. So I'm fine with that. To kind of follow up on what Mr. Olenoff was saying about the trees, I'm also a big fan of trees. And, and I understand that some of them may need to go to allow for the fence. But I guess I would ask, I'm curious, was there any thought to potentially replacing either onsite or elsewhere? Any trees that you would need to remove? Because I, I think some of those trees are, you know, probably older, they're older growth trees. So was there any thought to kind of do one for one for at least some of them?
You know, I, I don't think there was, but we can, we can consider that.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, Ellen. Steve, is your hand still?
Of course. And let me just, let me just add that. I'm sorry. Of course, that would presume though, that we controlled the land that we could do something like that on and that the, our landlord allowed us to do that. So there's a few variables there, but I, I hear well the theme, Ellen, that you and Stephen are concerned about. And I will talk to my client who's on the phone now to make sure that they do the very best they can to try to mitigate the impact of the removal of the trees.
Excellent. Thank you.
Michael, could I just speak to that real quick?
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead, Sarah.
Sure. So my name's Sarah Brown. I'm the project manager for Crown Castle. So just to go back to that one tree that's on the corner, we obviously try to save as many trees as we can in these projects. We don't want to, you know, clear cut anything. A lot of times what we see when we have a tree very close to a fence line is there ends up being damage to the roots. So the tree will end up dying later on, even though, you know, we're, we're within that area that we're not needing to cut it down. But there tends to be usually some root damage because of the location and getting the fence securely in the ground. And then also just to speak to the, the trees, we did have a site walk with the property owner and went through our plan, explained the trees that were going to be cut down. We actually had to adjust our plan for the ground layout due to, there was some trees that they had asked to be saved and for us not to go in that area. So we did confirm this. They are aware of the trees that will be coming down and we're okay with it.
Thanks.
Sure.
I found a question on signs because I noticed further down, you have a bunch of ominous looking signs. And are any of those signs going to be placed on the property or what's, and Abby, what's there now? Because I know the conditions say there should be no signs except one, just listing the company and the name. So it's a question for both of you. Are you planning?
Yeah, so there are, there are OSHA and FCC required RF safety signs that can be required at these types of sites. And to the extent we have that obligation, we'll have to put up those signs accordingly. They're not anything, you know, onerous. They're just, and quite frankly, the people working on these facilities are well aware of them. But it does give notice to workers as well as laypeople that would be outside the compound, just, you know, to stay out.
So which sign would be, would you be using as a notice, a caution and a warning sign? This is on page.
Yep, on, on C six. Sarah, do you know which sign we'd be using there? Obviously, we're going to be well within all the FCC limits for emissions. But I'm just curious if we know yet particularly which one or two we, or three we may need to locate.
Yeah, let me, I'm not sure off the top of my head, but let me go into the site right now and I can see what signs we currently have. Typically, they are placed on the gate entrance of the site. And there you go. So it, it would just be, that looks like a warning.
Can you see that? That was taken today.
Well done, Chris.
Exactly what it would be. Yeah. So it's just our company name, a contact number. So if there's any issues at the site, you can immediately reach Crown. The, so the site name, site number, contact number, and then any warning signs that were required to have.
Okay. So I just want to make that clear. So that, yeah, Abby, when in the conditions, you are allowing that sign. Plus, we are requiring a sign with the name and the phone number and all that. The condition, it said, except, which wasn't making it clear that we actually require the name and address and the phone number.
If I could share this picture again, there is not a lot of room for additional trees to be put there. They will be fighting and likely not thrive in this situation at the base of the pole.
Yeah, but they're going to take the old one down. So that frees up some space.
The ones that, yeah.
Yeah, unfortunately, the old one is in the compound though. So we're not going to be able to put a tree in the compound area.
Yeah, I, I just don't see a whole lot of opportunity for, for tree. I mean, there's some sixty-foot trees right there. That'll be hogging all the sun. These little relative bush saplings are, they're not going to grow very, very well.
Understood.
I think one of the discussions we need to have is the waiver of from the three to the fourth foot. And I'll just start off the discussion. We currently do have a four-foot tower at the end of Glacier Drive. And I believe our findings was that it had no negative impact to the town, given its physical location. And I think that my opinion is this site meets that same requirement. In fact, the fact that it can house up to four different carriers means an additional tower won't be needed. So if anything, in the future, this, this will cover the town, cover us in this location for quite some time. We're talking about eighty feet and an extra foot, eight feet in height addition and an extra foot wide. I find that to be a reasonable request, given this particular location. If it were somewhere else, I would, I would have to give it more thought. But my opinion is in this location, the four-foot request is, is reasonable and in fact, has some, some positive findings for me.
I agree with that.
I do as well. I, I think that it, for me, it's preferable to co-locate as much as we can in one pole rather than be looking at potentially multiple poles. I think aesthetically and, and just logistically, that doesn't make any sense. So I, I agree with that as well.
All right. Are there any other comments for now? I will invite the public. This is a public hearing. So if there's anyone from the public who would like to comment, I see a hand raised by Eric. So I will start to recognize folks if we could. Okay, Eric, you have, talking is permitted. If you could state your name and address and.
Yes, my name is Eric Dana. Live at seven ninety High Street. As we're direct to butter, the issue we have is not with the poles. It's actually with the generator. In the application, it states there would be no objectionable noise, odor, fumes, et cetera. But it makes no mention on what the actual level, sound level will be. And being a diesel generator, as for odors and fumes, I'd like to know how you plan on mitigating that and also mitigating the noise as we use, not just in the house, but our backyard. And we are within between four and five hundred feet, four hundred feet as the crow flies to the proposed generator location.
Thank you. Mr. Dolan, you want to respond to that? Because I will know that we've, we've had some other locations, definitely where we've set operating hours. And, you know, it's always a big consideration as to if a generator is going to create noise and stuff.
Yeah, so obviously we're bound by the ordinances of the town of Westwood and, and bylaws and need to operate this facility within appropriate noise level requirements, which we will do. You know, the, the property, which is two or three hundred feet away to measure that at that property line, I'm very confident that we would, the use of these generators would be below the allowable levels under the Westwood bylaw as far as odors and, you know, the periodic use of these and exercising of these facilities, that type of, any type of minor emissions from that would be dissipated into the air quite quickly and at several hundred feet away. I, I can't imagine there would be any impact in that regard. Sarah, I don't know if there was anything you wanted to add in that regard?
Yeah, I would just say for the generators, just so you understand, they're, they're not run all the time. They would only be obviously used in an emergency situation where the site lost power. And that's to keep for AT&amp;T and T-Mobile, the customers on air and those sites operating, especially important for AT&amp;T with the first net. So they do run through maintenance cycles where they do turn on and turn off for a minimal amount of time just to, you know, make sure that they're running and that in the event of an emergency. you know, make sure that they're running and that in the event of an emergency, they would operate correctly. Um again, the noise levels, um I've been near them, they're they're not extreme. And you know, at the the distance you are from the site, I don't believe that would be an issue.
Yeah, and the reason I bring this up, I have unfortunately lived within distance of a generator. And it was definitely very unpleasant experience, to say the least, uh including the odor. Um the also, what will the ex- I understand during emergencies, during non-emergency time, what kind, what would be the hours we would expect to have it on in typical duration?
Sure. Um so typically, they are cycled through um in off-peak hours, so that would be evenings, um weekends sort of thing. And then um they typically run for like fifteen to twenty minutes during their cycle time.
Okay. Yeah, um as I said, I don't know what the regulations are for Westwood as far as sound at particular distances. I would like to know that, as I said, the experience was a very negative experience and we already have enough road noise and noise between neighbors and such, you know, um central air conditioning and so on and so forth. So I really would like to mitigate any additional noise. The next one is um as you were stating earlier, uh there's potential for putting one or two more cells in the tower. What impact would that have on potentially additional generators?
Yeah, so um typically, customers do not share generators. Um some customers are okay with not using them. Um but it would be likely that if we did have two more customers come to the site, there would be the potential for uh two more generators.
And then 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 I will obviously wanna raise an objection. Um my concern would be is the generators, three gen- if you have two or three times number generators, even though they all generate the same amount of sound, it is additive, it is more noisy. Um so I would be just, I would just want to have the board make sure that the total sound coming from that area is what has to meet the uh Westwood requirements rather than individual generators.
We agree.
Those are those are my concerns. Now, what happens if um what happens if um when it is running, we do find it objectionable? What is, what's our recourse? Hopefully, it doesn't go to that, obviously.
As to sound?
Yes.
I I would imagine, well, you could contact Crown Castle or you could contact the town uh to have them determine whether that is uh whether any sound is violating the uh applicable uh sound limits.
Yes, and are the sound limits meant for objectionable or for health reason? It's two different, two different kinds of limits.
Yeah, I I I don't know. Uh I would assume it is for um quality of life as far as sound and not and not a health issue, but uh clearly, if there's a loud enough noise, it could have a health impact, but I I don't know the origins of the uh noise uh bylaw in Westwood.
Yeah, maybe um you might have some experience for other cell phone locations. I do remember years ago, we had an extensive discussion about the one off of the East Street Rotary here. Mr. Olonoff, did you wanna?
I I was trying to recall when we've had this, but I know we've had it. And and I think that we do need to regulate the hours because the time you don't want that generator running with residential uh neighbors around is evenings and weekends.
Exactly.
So so I think we really need to say when, and if there are multiple uh uh generators, then I think we need to re-say, you know, restrict uh them to different days so they would, you would never have the condition. Or do something so that you know that two won't be running, two or more won't be running at the same time.
Right, that would mitigate, obviously. Now, of course, means overall that they run more. You'll just have more more of them each separate day. But yes, uh definitely not uh evenings and weekends, because that's the quality time where obviously, we'd wanna be outside, sitting on a deck, so on and so forth.
Yeah, so Eric, Eric, I'm looking at uh sheet C two of the plans, and it looks like your property is about uh three hundred and seventy-six feet away from the proposed flagpole, which is obviously it, you know, seventy-six feet bigger than a football field.
Right.
And with, you know, uh noise attenuating objects in between, um I would be very surprised if there was a noise issue uh at your property, let alone any any other butter.
Yeah, and yes, we do have trees, obviously. This time of year, they're they're better than other times of year mitigating noise. We just wanna make sure that we have some influence on what noise is gonna be added as this is, if I'm not mistaken, this generator is new rather replacing existing generator.
Yep, so as I say, you know, we'll have a condition in our in any approval that we will operate it in accordance with all federal, state and local laws, and to the extent we are violating a local one in particular, from your perspective, um uh you know, I'm sure the town will uh look at that, as would my client.
That'd be appreciated. I know there are mitigations that can be done, but I've seen the design, it is reasonable. And we actually do appreciate that you're moving the tower because the existing uh T-Mobile tower is actually closer to us than what the new tower is going to be. So that that is actually appreciated. Uh the other question, um yeah, um this one we just weren't shown. Looking at the plans, there say there was gonna be some expansion expansion of the compound. And what does that entail?
So what we um if you looked at sheet C three, uh it shows a cumulative um uh seven hundred and fifty-eight square foot compound expansion. That allows for the additional space uh for the better centering of the tower within a fenced-in compound and the AT&amp;T equipment um over on the westerly portion of the compound. So in short, everything didn't fit before. Um it wouldn't fit within the existing compound. We're trying to enclose everything in as um uh Kate mentioned earlier, the existing pole is outside of the fenced-in compound area. We wanted to put it inside, and by doing that and also locating uh the full complement of AT&amp;T equipment, uh we needed to do this bump out, which, by the way, is uh pushing further away from your property, for instance, uh and further away from uh any abutters where there's residences.
That's fine. Uh the reason I bring it up specifically is um there are a number of natural wildlife pathways in and around the church property. Uh we have a number of photographs we have at all hours, day and night. And just wanted to make sure that those pathways would have minimum impact on them. That that's what this was, that's what this is for.
Sure, we we did our site design, taking into account a lot of different features of the surrounding area, including that, and this uh this design is uh set forth to address any of those concerns.
That'd be great. Uh those are actually all the issues I had. Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, Dana, for all those questions.
Dave, I had a a follow-up to in looking at this more closely. It says on the plan on C three uh that the applicant just referenced, says existing T-Mobile generator. And then it says proposed AT&amp;T generator location right next to each other. So are there proposed to be two? Because it doesn't indicate that the T-Mobile generator is going to be removed. Yeah, the the every uh every company that wants one will just have one. So if I I believe um the it says existing T-Mobile generator and uh that there's nothing changing in that regard. And then the AT&amp;T one is, there's a temporary facility there now. We're moving uh uh our equipment over to the uh east side of the property. Uh but in short, there will be one generator for each company. Okay, so we are talking two here. I thought we talked one before. Um so Abby, this brings up the question, we're only hearing this because it's a construction. If they rent this out to two more carriers, we're not gonna be a part of that discussion, right? Or will we to talk about the general, the additional generators and the any noise abatement that can be made or or whatever. So we need to come up with a proposed plan for up to four right now for timing of generator use, testing and emergency.
Right, um so we have a noise section in our zoning bylaw. Um however, it really, it only applies to construction. Um so what we've done for similar um applications um with generators, we usually recommend limiting the hours of the testing. So usually, we have a standard condition that we would um limit the testing of the generators to only be during the middle of day. We often say between noon and one P M during the week only. Um and the only other thing about the the noise impact, we, you know, can you've in the past tried to mitigate the sound. So with some, you know, plantings or any kind of noise barrier around the equipment to try to, you know, around the generator to try to help lessen the impact of the noise. But our our noise bylaw, uh with the limitations, is really about construction, not generators.
Right. So in this particular situation, we could have during testing times either four generators going off at once, adding to or, you know, compounding potential noise problems. Again, being over a football field away, I'm not with trees in in between. I'm not certain there's going to be a problem, but certainly with four, there's more of a potential than just one. Or you're staggering them, so it's one after another four times. So instead of fifteen minutes, you have an hour of testing four ju- up to four generators. So these are the things, the logistic things I think we need to work out. Abby, would not uh future carriers need to come back before this board for any IDR approval?
Um. They may not if there's no exterior, if it's all within. Um they would still need an approval, maybe an administrative approval by myself and from the building department. Uh but if there's no exterior or physical change.
Okay.
Um.
So I think, Abby, if, so we were saying here, there would be a change in the noise levels. So I think we should just say that that would trigger more than an administrative IDR.
So we could even include um, you know, with that noise limit, the testing hours, if we do a condition limiting the hours, you could also have a condition of future carriers with a future generator shall return to the planning board for review.
Yeah, because Sarah did mention some carriers elect not to use generators. And we may get one of those.
Yep, and just to add a little bit more to the generator, I did look up the specifications for the one that AT&amp;T is looking to install. Um so it's a sixty-two decibel, and that's comparable to um a washing machine and air conditioner running, just to give you some frame of reference for for what the sound would be.
Thank you. Uh Kate just had her hand raised for a while, so let me.
Thank you. Thank you. Sorry, I did just wanna mention, I I understand that we may not have anyone representing them um on the call this evening, but there is a preschool that happens much, you know, right there, right at the site um most days during the week. So um if we were to to set up specific times um when the testing would be happening, I'd like to just keep not um although though I understand that the the noise would be minimum, um and I appreciate that, Sarah, what you just shared with us, but I I would want it to not impact um, you know, sixty children either.
Thanks, Kate. I think the and the hours, as we noted, it's like sometime during the day is better because uh right now, there's uh you've got sixty decibels every time a car goes by. So it's uh even though it's getting late, but during the day, you have trucks and everything all day, but it's also in the woods, which is kind of your refuge. So um any other comments here? Any anyone else from the public wanting to speak? All right, um Abby.
You did receive in your packet a um a comment letter from a resident. Um there was, you know, a comment about um concerns about health impacts of radiation and, you know, wireless facilities in proximity to children. Um and there were some documentation attached. Um I did provide that to you in your packet. I don't know if that individual is here tonight, but um um so the recommendation from this individual was to um, you know, propose the tower as far away from the school as as possible. Um which I I think this location, you know, it's an existing wireless facility. The the purpose um of why the applicant is back is because the existing, you know, the the facility AT&amp;T was most recently located uh before this temporary location was most recently located at the middle school. Uh but that contract was up, so that's why they came to in December to be located um co-located on the existing um pole. Um I would also add that the um the federal regulations um say that um, you know, perceived um health impacts um, you know, aren't a reason that the planning board can use to deny such an application if it meets the um state and federal regulations, which was a part of the application requirement was to submit a certification of compliance with the S D C um federal guidelines for wireless facilities.
Thanks, thanks, Abby. Um see, so I think we have, we have four things to do related to this. So there are findings. So the planning board may authorize this based on a couple of specific findings. So we have to do that. There are waivers that are requested, and there are the conditions, which we should add a condition related to the operating hours and uh and then finally, if we get to that, it's the uh closing of the public hearing. So those are kind of the four things that we need to go through. So Abby's has displayed.
Helps, this is just kind of um the the summary of some of the items you've uh touched on. Um the um the first one is okay, about the location of the facility, it impacts and also that um the request for the increased diameter um going from, you know, three feet is allowed in the bylaw, and it leaves it up to the planning board, at the planning board's sole discretion to increase that um diameter of the pole.
Steve, is your hand raised?
Yeah. Yes, I I just, you know, we should definitely add that condition about the hours, but also say that, just leave it to them, that uh each uh each company that that has a generator should coordinate with the others to make sure that they don't run their generators in the same day of the week. And leave it at that. I think that that'd be the simplest and easiest thing to do. If that everyone else agrees with that?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't I don't have a problem uh turning this into administrative review. Um at the time, if there's no reason, if there's uh within our bylaws for them to come to a planning board meeting and submit um to add another carrier, um I wouldn't have a problem personally with Abby or the town planner uh coordinating that effort.
Yeah, I think if we if we do it on different days, cuz didn't you say, um Sarah, it's how often do they test, like every, like once every couple of weeks or something here?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's it's not very often.
So as long as it's not like it would, it would not be pleasant to have, you know, all of them on the same day, like you you have noise for fifteen minutes and it's quiet, then another fifteen minutes, and basically, that's no good. But if they, since you've got a couple of weeks to work with, it's, we could have a condition that it's um not on the same day, and if that captures, then there's no need to come back for a a review of this board just for the for that, cuz that's what we would decide at the time anyway, probably.
Sarah, is sixty decibels pretty typical for these types of generators? Or is that an extremely quiet one?
No, that's about, I mean, I don't know, some of the ones that have been around for ten or fifteen years are that quiet. Um but yeah, that's that's about general.
Cuz if it, if it truly is sixty decibels over a football field away through trees, I don't think anyone's gonna hear this thing. If that's the closest neighbor of butter.
Yeah, and I mean, again, they are programmable, so we can definitely work um with, you know, the jurisdiction and the butter to try and figure out what works the best if if by some reason it is audible. But like we said, we don't believe it would be.
Yeah, well, uh an upcoming carrier may come in and and they may have a five hundred decibel generator they wanna use.
It'll be like a rock concert.
Well, they just don't wanna spend the money. Well, they just don't want to spend the money.
It is important because it's also the um, the way that the noise happens along High Street is your back backyard is like a refuge, because the front yard, yeah, there's trucks going by all day and it's like eighty decibels or something. And you have to mute your Zoom calls while the trucks go by, but your backyard, it's it's a very big difference. Um, and so that's to have a generator in your backyard is is would be noticeable, even if there's, you know, otherwise a lot of noise. All right, uh, so the findings, uh, any other, we have those findings we talked about. It seems like everyone was okay with this. The diameter, um, and then the fenced enclosure providing and just the the setting of everything there. So does anyone have any any comments on these two findings? Are we good with what's written here? Do we want to discuss, uh, do we want to? So Abby, what's the process here? Do we need to have a vote on the findings, a vote on the waivers, a vote on the application or? Yes, your heard is nodding his head. Okay.
That would be, that would be the cleanest way to do it. So you have a good record to on which you can rely.
Um, let's see, is there any, I see there's a Q and A question. Which is, uh, who's going to police when the generators are being run? And I believe we are answering that through the condition of specifying the time that they're allowed to be run. Um, and actually, we'll we'll ask though, like, so what does happen in a situation where i- if there's not compliance, then someone would call the town and ultimately go to the town building inspector or town planner? How, what should someone do if they need to complain, if they need to report a violation?
Right, they could on contact um building or, you know, me in the planning department, I would, you know, coordinate with the building department. Um, you know, this application has come before us, so I would have contact information, you know, so I could reach out uh right away, but either, you know, building is the enforcement arm, but I could also quickly um coordinate that um contact on reminding him of the planning board conditions. And then, you know, building is the official zoning enforcement officers and would enforce the conditions of this approval.
I agree with that.
Dave, sorry, could we just identify who who asked that question?
Uh, yes, that was a comment by Fran Fusco. Any? Would someone like to make a motion about the findings?
Well, the wording here is not the wording we're using in the findings. Right, it's uh well, we're finding it just meets all the requirements.
Well, I think.
That were also that this is just a replacement of the existing tower. Therefore, uh, all all of the original findings from the original uh one carryover and and then the same, you know, no additional scrutiny is needed, but that sort of thing.
Yeah, so actually, like you were saying, sorry, you were saying that earlier, basically, we can uh recognizing that it's what you just said, we find these two things. And that's it. Is that? So Steve, do you want to make that as a motion?
Oh, okay, I I move that we include those two findings in the decision.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Um, is there any further discussion? Uh, let's, we'll have a roll call vote. Mr. Path.
Yes.
Mr. Olunoff.
Yes.
Um, Ms. Nguyen.
Yes.
And Ms. Rawlings.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Secondly, we have the waivers that are being requested from the standard materials here. We have, uh, Abby, do anything to say on this or? We can read them.
No, nothing to add. It was um it's kind of the uh seven standard um that refers to your E I D R. Um, you know, for traffic study, exterior lighting plan, uh, a request on the site plan, providing the full property details, which, you know, if you had a different project, um, that's where show all drainage, um, you know, on rock features. Um, so this one is, you know, I think you could find that it's not relevant for this tower replacement.
And just to play devil's advocate, because I know it's, the question has been asked in the past of like, don't we, we grant waivers all the time? It's like, yeah, but this is if this were a different kind of project, like exterior lighting plan, there's no lights. Right? So there's no, I mean, we always have these waivers, but it's because each project, uh, if, when you look at the specific project, you can see that the word that these items might might not be necessary. There could be a complicated project where we would want to review all this stuff. And we have requests to like lighting plans and they even had a presentation model once, so. Uh, does any, someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept all the waivers given that uh that in in the, in the case of this kind of uh application, uh those being waived are not applicable to this uh development.
Second.
All right, there's a motion from Mr. Olunoff, seconded by Ms. Rawlings. Uh, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, a roll call vote, um, Ms. Nguyen.
Yes.
Mr. Path.
Yes.
Ms. Rawlings.
Yes.
Mr. Olunoff.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So we are granting the waivers. Um, moving on to a motion for approving the proposed facility for eight oh eight High Street with the conditions that were discussed. Would someone like to continue that my sentence is there?
I I move that we uh approve this uh application uh for cell tower replacement and uh with the conditions that we've discussed and have outlined here.
Um, sorry, um, to the board, did, I don't remember what you, um, I added the ones about the generator testing hours and the additional carriers um to coordinate the testing, but I don't remember what, did you decide anything on the?
With no, with no tree replacement necessary.
All right, for for condition twelve, don't we want to specifically say that um that there will, not that we're going to coordinate, but that there will not be more than one generator being run at the same time or on the same day?
That's in eleven, Dave. It's mentioned in eleven.
Oh, right, okay.
And does that confirm with the generator testing that excludes emergency situations where they might have to be running? This is just for testing.
Well, it says.
Yeah, but just to be careful, you could just write excluding emergency situations.
Okay.
Or you could say routine.
Yeah, just say routine testing.
Um, so does, does Steve's motion stand as it was phrased?
So give, given these corrections, and one more, in in number twelve, you'd also want to say, you're coordinating, uh, coordinate uh, what you said before, uh, routine testing hours.
Yeah, and just being detailed, like I would say, routine generator testing, not generator routine testing, because you're, you know, you're testing the generator.
It's written the same way in eleven and twelve right now.
Okay, yeah, I will fix it for a grammatical.
I think, I mean, if you find a better grammatical way to express it, it's like, you know, we're trying to capture here, because routine is kind of, it could be considered sort of ambiguous too. But the point is that, yeah, this is not going to prohibit, um, if uh there's a big problem, disaster situation, and they're not going to have to come to the planning board before they.
I think it's understood if if four need to run because it's an emergency situation for them to keep radio frequency going, then they have to be run.
But that's not testing.
It's an emergency.
The testing covers it.
No, I know that.
Motion, the motion is to uh approve this as, as, as with these changes we see in front of us now.
It's currently written, Mr. Olunoff.
It's currently written.
Seconded.
All right, a second from Ms. Nguyen. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, a roll call vote, uh, Mr. Path.
Yes.
Ms. Rawlings.
Yes.
Ms. Nguyen.
Yes.
Mr. Olunoff.
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So we approved that. And uh, this is a public hearing, so we need a motion to close the public hearing. All right, there's a motion from Ms. Nguyen, seconded by Ms. Rawlings to close the public hearing. Uh, roll call vote, uh, Ms. Rawlings.
Yes.
Mr. Olunoff.
Yes.
Ms. Nguyen.
Yes.
Mr. Path.
Yes.
All right, the public hearing is closed. Um, the uh permit is granted. Thank you, Mr. Dolan and Ms. Brown, uh, and uh Sahel for your maps and description. Uh, thanks, everyone.
Thank you all very much. Thank you, Abby, again. Take care, bye-bye.
Bye.
All right, so Abby, you want to let Rob back in?
Oh, yeah.
All right, let's see, so, and then we're not going to talk about the performance guarantee, the recess way thing that was taken off earlier. All right, so board reorganization. So every year, the board votes the first meeting after town meeting for chair, vice chair and secretary. And we also will go through discussion of all the subcommittees um and appointments for those. So, uh, before we get into all this, I just wanted to also thank Abby for all of the work that she's done this past year. It's uh, we all want to do a lot with with the planning board. And I sometimes forget that every idea that we have results in many hours, many additional hours of work. And so we should recognize that we had, we did our own comprehensive plan over the last two years with, with a lot of help from a lot of people. But a lot of that work fell on our town planner. And um, and then we also did the the things that happened with our uh town meeting, getting the articles approved this year. The tremendous amount of work that the um, that's been uh, that's been accomplished. Um, and so we, as we think about the next year, planning, uh, work planning, just remember that uh for every idea we have, it creates a tremendous amount of work and we don't have an unlimited uh staff, whether we don't have a staff, really, there's a planning department that uh is working hard to uh to implement these things. So I just wanted to recognize the hard work that Abby has done in particular this past few years. Um, and then just in terms of um our reorganization, I just want to open it up to a discussion of um of where we go. I'm personally, I'm not interested in continuing as chair. I think it makes sense to um, to rotate things around. So um I'll just throw it out there. Also, we have new people, maybe questions they might want to ask about the different roles or anything anybody wants to jump in with. Or or not. So um, I think, um, I think path, maybe would you be interested in in chairing this?
Yeah.
Sure.
I'll second that.
All right.
Is that a motion, Dave?
I'll make a motion that uh, to elect Chris Path as chair.
And second.
Seconded. Um, is there any discussion? Then um, we'll have a.
Dave, procedurally, you should ask if there are other nominations.
Yes. Yeah, you think. Are there any, are there any other nominations? All right, um, then all of, of, and actually, this one, so Steve Olunoff is is observing, but he's not participating. So um, the um, roll call vote, um, Ms. Nguyen.
Yes.
Um, Ms. Rawlings.
Yes.
Mr. Cotty.
Yes.
I vote yes as well, Mr. Path.
Yes.
Yes. All right, uh, vice chair. So the vice chair position, as Abby outlined, um, the main role is to step in as chair. And pretty much, we've talked over the years, there've been like, it's been more or less coordinated. Sometimes, you know, chair and vice chair would um not coordinate, shouldn't say that. But I mean, you know, you, I used to have, the vice chair would ask like, what do I need to know in case I need to fill in kind of stuff? So there could be some informal thing there, as long as there's no open meeting law problems. But um, mostly, it's been to just be there in case of the need to uh chair the meeting. So anyone, is anyone interested or any, any discussion we would like to have about the vice chair position?
Dave, just given the, the new composition of the board, I think, I know why you're, you're not interested in being the chair, having you as a vice chair, having served in that role a couple of times, I think would be really beneficial to the board.
I agree.
All right.
And so it, so a motion then for for Dave to be vice chair.
Just wanted to see if there was discussion, but.
Yeah.
All right. And I will accept that. Uh, is there any, um, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Uh, any, any, any other nominations? All right, then um, we'll have a roll call vote, uh, Mr. Path.
Yes.
Ms. Nguyen.
Yes.
Mr. Cotty.
Yes.
Ms. Rawlings.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. The third position is the secretary, right, or clerk? Is it secretary?
Secretary.
So we have a recording secretary who records and takes the notes. Some towns, they have like this clerk or the secretary sign the decisions of planning board, so we don't do that. Some places, um, yeah, and does anyone, we do have, though, an annual report that um, that Steve Olunoff has put together many times. And so there is a, that goes into the um, into town's annual report. So there is a role that ideally, the secretary would help to facilitate that, um, and maybe work with the town planner, you know, not have to write the whole thing, but maybe they could write the whole thing. So that's, it would be nice if someone would be uh interested in uh in doing that, uh, and kind of helping to. And is anyone interested in that?
We could, I just say that I have never participated in writing the, the annual report. That's done completely by Abby. Well, the report that I've been writing was the one for the appointments for various uh boards and council that that is coming up next. And uh, and I would I I I I did that because I help most of those positions, though, though not all. And uh, I'd be happy to have anyone else do it if they want. But I, and I would participate, but that's coming up. But and 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 all the years, I don't think the recording uh sec- secretary has, the secretary has done anything except one time, we had a meeting of just the members of the planning board, just to make a quick decision. And I actually wrote up the minutes, and that's the only record of that that I know.
I think there might have been a time when we wanted to write a letter. You know, the planning board wanted to submit a letter of endorsement for something, you know, like a grant maybe, or, you know, it's I think it just depends on, it would always be helpful to have someone volunteer to do that, but.
I see a hand raised.
Like, so I'm, whenever you guys are done talking, I'm volunteering.
All right, then I nominate Kate Nguyen as uh secretary.
I'll second that.
Is there any, are there any further nominations? All right, then there'll be a roll call vote, uh, Mr. Path.
Yes.
Ms. Rawlings.
Yes.
And Mr. Cotty.
Yes.
Um, I, I vote yes, and Ms. Nguyen.
Yes.
Yes. All right, so we have, we have our, our officers elected. Let's go talk about the um the committee appointments and how that works. Abby, do you want to? Walk us through that.
So um, there's also a number of what we call, you know, regional and subcommittees. Um, you know, some of them are by these, um, you know, are regional organizations and they ask the town um, if we have representatives, um, you know, resident, or you know, either staff or uh, board members that are able and willing and interested to participate in these um committees. So each year, you select new members, or you try to be consistent with certain members over the years. We actually, I think we do have some members of, we hack here tonight, too, because they had asked about the Planning Board considering having a liaison for their committee. So they're here tonight if you want to hear from them. If you're interested in doing that, we usually have someone on, you know, pedestrian and bike safety committee, the MAPC, which is Metro Area Planning Council, TRIC, which is the Three Rivers.
Your local council.
Yes, interlocal council. The Housing Partnership, that's a group that meets, you know, as needed to make recommendations to the town, usually to the Planning Board on affordable housing. You may have heard, we are in search of a new housing and zoning agent right now, but that is, she is, that position staffs that committee. We have an MBTA Advisory Board that usually meets on Wednesdays in Boston at 10:00 a.m. So some of these are during the day. Some of them are in, in Boston. So that's why I believe Steve has been on a number of committees because he has, you know, some flexibility about going into town during the, during the weekday. There's also a Regional Transportation Advisory Council that meets once a month on Wednesdays, also in Boston. And and I believe that's all of them.
And these are, we, we recommend these ones to the Select Board. The Select Board makes the appointments, actually. And so there's, it's not necessarily a given that it has to be the Planning Board member for everything. So just a thought.
Right. So tonight, you vote your recommendations then the Select Board when they're reviewing, you know, various appointments. Usually what they do in June or July, they'll make their official appointments.
Steve, did you have something you wanted?
Yeah, so I like to make my speech that I make every year about this time, that I think it's very important. Some of these are very important. I, I hold a couple of them. In the past, I've held a lot of them. But and also, we also appoint alternates to all these. And I think that's important. If you really want to learn something, you should be an alternate. But the important thing is, please don't say you'll do it if you're not going to attend the meetings. We've had that quite a bit in the past where we assign someone to say, you know, we've appointed this person to this position, and they don't attend any of the meetings, never mind the majority of the meetings. So that's, you know, it's not helpful. You know, if we wanted someone who isn't going to attend the meeting, you know, we can appoint anyone who isn't going to attend the meeting. So the important thing is to get someone who, who makes that commitment. So MAPC, that's a three, three-year appointment. So I have one more year to go on that. It'd be nice to have an alternate. I know in the past, Dave Atkins was the alternate, and he really learned, he attended quite a bit, and really, I think you'll agree, you learned quite a bit all about MAPC and how important it is. And so anyone interested in any kind of, you know, regional things, then you should, that'd be a good one for you. And the, I just want to point out, the quality meetings, they, they could be anytime, any day of the week, usually not Fridays, but and they could be in Boston, or they could be outside along 128. They're always like in a slightly different place. And but consistently lately, they've been in the, in the mornings. Occasionally, we used to have them in the evening, but mostly, it's now for like, you know, from nine, eight, nine thirty to about noon time. So that's a good one for you people to really learn quite a bit. The MBTA Advisory Board, that one, I just looked it up today, and it's all over the place. It's, I think they're trying to set, to settle on 10 o'clock in the morning, and it's in Boston at the Transportation Building. But it can be any day of the week. It varies all the time. They just manage to get some day that they want. The Regional Transportation Advisory Council, that is consistent, that is at 2:30 now, 2:30 to four on the second Wednesday of the month. Now, Westwood is a, has a representative, it used to be me, but and I actually served four years as Chair of that Advisory Council. And if that happens, you actually get to sit on the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization. And you can, you know, be quite effective. That's, that's the organization that distributes all of the federal transportation funding. So that's an important thing. So what the Advisory Council does is, is they, using the Chairman, the Chair of the, of that Advisory Council is the one that votes on the MPO. And and they report back. So you have like a second-hand look at what's going on at the MPO. It'd be nice if someone started attending that. I want to point out that if we, Westwood doesn't send someone, you could lose that seat. There are, there are, well, there are 97 communities in Boston that are in the MPO. But not all 97 are members of the Advisory Council. And the key, the key thing to be that is, is attending the meetings, making that commitment. So we made that commitment a while ago. We had, remember Trevor was attending. Lately, we haven't had anyone. And when I, I can't attend because I am the, I can't vote for Westwood at that because I am the alternate, designate, alternate representative to the MPO from the TRIC subregion. And as such, they have a rule that you can't vote on the Advisory Council if you're, and also be voting on the MPO. So we need someone for that. And then the Three Rivers one, Dave's been active on that. And so you want him to discuss, David, are you hoping to continue?
So, yeah, that's, that's the only, that's the one I would want to stick with. I feel like I've been on there for three years, so I kind of know, know how it works. I think it might be good to just hear from Kate and Ellen, like, kind of what your thoughts are, having seen all this. Who wants to go?
I'll start. I'm definitely interested in the WAC liaisonship. Because I, I, that's near and dear to my heart. So I'm definitely interested in that. I could probably be an alternate for some of the ones that meet, you know, downtown, because I'm assuming at some point, we'll go back to meeting in person. And while virtual meeting with people from all over is not as difficult, getting into town on kind of a sporadic schedule is not quite as easy. But I'd love to be an alternate because I think there's, there's definitely value there. Aside from that, I'm kind of happy to fill in where needed.
Um, thank you, Ellen. So I was on the Housing Partnership previously, so I can, I can be an alternate there or or whatever we need. I was also on Ped Bike, so happy to be, I don't know that we need an alternate there, but I'm happy to do that. For the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, that interests me mostly just because it's only quarterly. And I think I would have a hard time getting into Boston on a regular basis. So although these others are of interest to me, I just don't think that I could logistically get there. So if that.
So why don't we, Steve, which ones are you interested in continuing as the main Westwood?
So I'm continuing anyway as MAPC, the regular, but we do need an alternate. And I need to continue on the MBTA Advisory Board, currently serving on a number of subcommittees and they have been active, much more active than the last year on that.
So those, those two.
Those two.
Okay, so we're looking to fill Regional Transportation Advisory Council. Dave has indicated he wanted to stay on TRIC. I'm interested in staying on housing. And we have pedestrian and bike, right? And WAC, sorry. We've never had a WAC representative, right, officially?
That's correct.
And I think we would be looking at, this is like a liaison, it wouldn't be.
Wouldn't be an official appointment to a council.
More of a communication role, like someone who would keep it, who would help us to, especially with the sustainability and the resilience and sustainability comprehensive plan elements, if they expect, there's a lot of stuff we would want to coordinate, so.
Right. And I think, I think we have the Chair, WAC, and at least one other member here tonight, if you have any questions for them. But I believe they usually meet on Thursday evenings, maybe once, once a month.
I noticed, I noticed it seems to move around from one Thursday to the other. It hasn't been consistent, but it's usually Thursdays.
Why don't we, I think we'll also talk a lot about WAC stuff as we get into like the work plan and all. I see. So Rob, let me ask you what your plans are like in terms of like, it would be, like, what is, how do you see what's coming up for you?
I'm going to submit a resignation letter from the Planning Board tomorrow to Chris Coleman and Abby. I think that's the right path, right, Pat, in terms of where that letter goes?
You have to resign to the Town Clerk.
The Town Clerk, to Dottie, okay, thank you. So I will submit that letter tomorrow morning. And that opens up my spot.
Rob?
Yes, sir.
Effective immediately?
Yes.
Okay.
And that would open up my spot for the pedestrian bike safety, for the one thing I currently serve on.
It wouldn't be a bad thing if there were a Select Board member on the Ped Bike Committee. Just throwing it out there.
I found that out also.
With all due respect, Dave, the Select Men, the Board, the Select Board are the road commissioners in town, and Ped Bike Safety is an Advisory Board appointed by the Select Board to give Select Board recommendation on Ped, on Ped Bike safety issues. So the Select Board are the Highway Commissioners in town. So that won't work.
That won't work.
I think it would be a conflict to some degree. Yeah. So we're looking to fill Ped Bike and Regional Transportation Advisory Council and WAC with the remaining members, Mr. Gotti not included.
Right, so I could do Ped Bike for sure.
Okay. Do we, we don't have an alternate for that, do we, currently?
I don't think we have, no.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'm not sure what is needed.
Yeah, I don't think it's needed, yeah.
And I'm happy to stay on as an alternate for TRIC. I served on that for the first three or four years I was on the Planning Board, so I'm well acquainted with what TRIC does. Regional Transportation Advisory Council.
You know, if they, if they, I don't know how they're doing their meetings, but if they're going to do them remote, like that, that changes things. But it's just too, I can't make a commitment to that.
Steve, are you aware of how they're holding their meetings currently?
Well, they're currently remote, but I don't know how soon that will change.
Yeah, nobody knows anything.
Here's a question on this, and I don't know if this is something that's allowed, but could Kate and I kind of take that one together and divvy up who can go when? You know, if I can go one month, but she can't go to the next meeting, is that?
That's essentially what, what the alternate is for.
Yeah.
So we make one. What? I see no prohibition against that. No, I, I think that's the intention of the alternate position, to fill in where, you know, who's primary and who's alternate is basically a name only in this particular situation.
That was kind of my question is, you know, is it really a stringent policy, or if we were to end up going 50/50 or whatever?
No, and what happens is, if you go to a meeting, Ellen, and you want to report back that something happened at that meeting that is, you know, germane to what we're doing here in Westwood, you would just tell us at a, at a next meeting, all right, this is what we talked about. And, you know, it might take 30 seconds, might take three minutes, I don't know, just to clue us in as to, as to what's happening on that. Or Kate, if you happen to go to that meeting, then you would just tell us what happened. Or whatever happened may have no bearing on Westwood at all, that meeting. But you might not want to clue us in, you might want to, I don't, that's up to you.
We can just talk about it, the two of us, and not even tell you.
That's true.
Yeah, Kate, if that works for you, I'm happy to kind of similar challenges, schedule-wise, so, and we could just work it out between us from there.
Yeah, great.
Okay. And we need an alternate for housing. I think I would be the primary, and we need an alternate, if anyone wants to. They are all local and currently remote. So if there's anyone who wants to.
I can be an alternate for that because I have already served on it, so that's fine.
Okay. And Ellen, you expressed interest in WAC?
Yes, please.
We've never had, and this is not an official, but you can act as the liaison. So Pat, is this position even going to Select Board? No, no. She's just going to be ex, probably, I presume she'll be ex officio, a liaison to the Planning Board to WAC. WAC again is an Advisory Board to the Select Board, appointed by the Select Board. Does not exist in the Charter. It's a, it exists at the, at the behest of the Select Board and gives advice to the Select Board on, on energy efficiency issues. And Tom Philbin is a staff person to WAC as well, who's done a good job for us. So I think that is everything, except, I think we're looking for a replacement for Rob as the alternate to the MAPC. Ellen, you are not, you are an alternate or a main, I'm not sure which for, I think Steve goes to all the MAPC meetings anyway, but would you be interested in being an alternate?
Yeah, sure. That's terrific.
Okay. I think, Abby, have I covered everything?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yep. So af, after this meeting, I'll submit your recommendations to the Select Board. And then once the Select Board make their appointments, I can get back to everyone, and I'll try to get you updated on the various group lists. That way, you'll be notified from the administrators for each group of when those meetings are.
Yeah, you'll start getting emails on your Planning Board web email from these people. That's why you've been named even as an alternate, you'll start getting emails about meetings coming up and things to be discussed and so forth. All right, next, Abby, you want to, it's the Comprehensive Plan discussion and how we address the action items that we created for ourselves. Folks, I don't think you're going to have legal issues in a discussion of the comprehensive plan, so I'm going to respectfully bow out. Thank you for your patience with me this evening. Thank you for your, your help.
And Chris, before we move forward, is it possible at this point to just say thanks to Rob Gotti for his service and his announcement that he was going to be submitting his resignation tomorrow?
Absolutely. It's always appropriate to thank someone for public service.
Yeah, I think it's just, the guy said he was going to turn in his resignation, we were like, okay.
Someone watching from home and might not, you know, know.
It's only been here a year. We didn't get that attached. Kidding.
I'm only down the virtual hall here, anyway.
Yeah, it's, it's been a great year, Rob. Thank you so much for your, all your contributions. Been an incredible year for, for the Planning Board with the Comprehensive Plan and all that. So thank you so much for everything.
It's been my pleasure, and I'd love to just echo what Dave said earlier about all the work that Abby puts in, you know, the Comprehensive Plan and all the warrant articles and everything else is just enormous load, and she does a great job.
Yeah.
Thank, thank you. And I don't, you know, you all participated in the Comprehensive Plan. I know we have two new members here, but Kate was on the Steering Committee that did a lot of the, you know, outreach work and the drafts and the writing of the Comprehensive Plan. And then Ellen was also started off on the FinCon when this started, but then also participated in the various, you know, meetings and the vision session that we had. So this Planning Board, Rob kind of came in at the last seven, eight months. this planning board, Rob kinda came in at the last seven, eight months, uh, but we had been working out with, you know, previous planning board members, um, as well. Um, but the comprehensive plan was a big achievement for, uh, Westwood. Um, you know, it was an update from our two thousand plan, but, you know, getting this accomplished, um, also in-house, um, you know, within two years, so it was on time and on budget, cuz we didn't spend any money on it, so it was, you know, good time schedule, on time and on schedule, even a pandemic didn't slow this down, so you got it through. Um, and when you reviewed it in, in the fall, um, you up, you know, you included a section on implementation, uh, where you tried to prioritize the various action items, and, um, you mentioned in there that, um, you wanted to try to start talking about it, you know, each May, and kind of begin reviewing it and look at what items to work on over the next, um, you know, about the next year, that's kind of what your works, you know, your work schedule when you think ahead, you kind of think about, you have your summer, um, what you can work on over the summer to try to get ready for, you know, fall town meeting, if there is going to be a fall town meeting, and then items that may take more time, you know, looking ahead till annual town meeting, which is in the spring. Um, annual town meeting is in the spring, you know, it may occur in May, but you really need to have, um, you know, the warrant closes in early January, usually the first week in January, um, public hearings begin later, but usually by January you need to make a decision of, you know, being ready, what you're gonna be ready to go forward with. Um, so, for right now, you know, in your packet, I included some, some of my thoughts, I, what I think are sort of the highest priority in terms of, you know, items that you have the ability to bring forward, or that, that you can work on. Um, I think one of them that we've heard about recently is making zoning amendments to your solar regulations. Um, currently, the zoning bylaw, um, allows, let's say, the last time you revisited, did solar, it was in two thousand seventeen, and you, um, allow, Westwood allows, uh, roof, I'll say, you know, solar on, on the roof of buildings is allowed by right, um, so on, on commercial buildings, it's allowed with an administrative EIDR approval by me, um, and then, then a building permit, so there isn't a public hearing process when it's on, um, affixed to a building, but the ground mounted requires a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. Uh, but recently, we've had some applications, uh, for the ground mounted, um, you know, not, I wouldn't say solar farms, they're not big, they're usually been, we've had three single family ones, um, go to the zoning board of appeals, which is a special permit, and they were denied. Um, so it's been, you know, come up again about, and, and we have some members from WAC here too, has, have, um, also attended some recent zoning board meetings, um, and have, you know, expressed interest in the planning board bringing forward, you know, zoning amendments to change that, so there's a couple of different options that you could look at doing, um, you know, one thought is to, you know, updating the zoning to have more specific criteria of what, you know, what's allowed, um, and how, you know, specific design criteria, um, with the zoning board, or you could change it to the, um, to be reviewed by you as a planning board, as a EIDR review, um, or, you know, set certain size uh, limits, or you could do an administrative review, so there's a couple of different options that you could do. Um, the comprehensive plan really called for encouraging renewable energy, so we want, you know, we don't want it to be too cumbersome for applicants to, um, to install solar, um, and, and what we had found recently that there's been some neighborhood objections to the ones that are installed, you know, not on a, on a roof, just, I think for aesthetics or, um, you know, in some cases it was a front yard, so, you know, views and, and for people even just driving by had come up, um, with the zoning board. So really just, I think that's something, if the planning board wants to, we would, you know, start, wanna start drafting some of those options and bring those forward for you to work on this summer.
So you, you would like the planning board to start compiling ideas that would go into a new solar, uh, ground mounted bylaw?
Yeah.
You want, are you planning on working on this, and then we would review what you work on, and add in our thing, our ideas?
Um, you know, I could propose some op, you know, options for you to consider, you know, at, at some upcoming meetings, or if you have any initial thoughts right now, or over the next couple of meetings, um, you actually didn't have any new applications for your next meeting, um, but June and July is kind of your lightest workload in terms of applications, so I would like to use this time to try to start drafting some options for you to consider.
I think it would be a good idea to, um, kind of work with WAC also initially to come up with kind of the big picture of, um, what we're trying to do, you know, and to try to have a lot of this discussion through, um, through WAC public meetings and then coming back to the planning board, but try to think of how to best, uh, develop this with community input and, um, to get the, the help of, of WAC basically to, um, to kind of get into the weeds on a lot of this, and then come back to the planning board, just trying to think of ways to, is there a lot of issues, like I think there's, one is how to promote it on how to encourage it in residential situations, and the second issue will be that, of course, the solar farm idea will, it, it should be distinguished in some way, like it needs to, we need to anticipate that, because we did, would not want the intention of just saying, well, homeowners wanna do solar, they can't get it on their roof, that's got very little to do with, um, large scale, um, uh, solar arrays, you know, the, you know, so I think, you know, all those kinds of issues, you should come up with something from, that's, uh, figure out what, what the community really needs and work with WAC and everything, and kind of back and forth. And Steve, did you?
Yeah, so, there are a lot of legal questions here, first of all, our zoning bylaw doesn't specify it as a principal use only as an accessory use. So, uh, so we're silent right now on, well, so it's prohibited to, to, you know, someone take a piece of property and just put it, you know, fill it up and that, as a principal use, as solar panels. And on the, uh, residential, uh, it's, there's a state law that we've been informed about that, that says you can't have a special permit, uh, for that, it, you can't prohibit it, uh, in any way if someone wants to have solar on, on their property, uh, unless it's an issue of, of public safety, public welfare, or uh, what are the three things, uh? And then, and but, the things, things that don't really, you can't, you can't really say no to it.
So you're saying that the state law currently says ground mounted solar is a by right for every homeowner?
Uh, you're right. So, so we could do a, um, a, uh, EIDR, and it'd be nice, you know, to have the ZBA have to do it, but not us, so the question is, what does that mean? But the planning board is stuck doing those EIDRs, um, so those are the issues. So they, we, we, but we need to, we need to fix this at the very next town meeting, because it's, it's not working right now, and, and it's subject to, to, uh, appeals, appeals that, that I think wouldn't, wouldn't succeed. I'm not an attorney, but I think they have a pretty good standing that, that, uh, what we're doing now is not the right thing.
Abby, I see you brought Nora in as a panelist, is that for, does she have something to say on the matter?
No, only cuz I didn't realize she was hanging out as an attendee this whole time, but, um.
Elevated her status just because, so to speak. Kidding. Um, okay, well, I, I think we have, um, a lot to go on, Abby, you're looking for more direction from the board at this point, are you looking for more input, more ideas to, to jump off with, uh, I mean, we think we could talk solar for quite a while right now, but we want it to be productive discussion. So what are you looking for from us right now?
Um, I guess, you wanna give me the okay that I'll, you know, start working on something to bring forward some drafts to you, you have a couple of meetings in June, uh, which I think right now your workload is somewhat late, so I could come back to you with a draft proposal, um.
Do you see potentially the need for an advisory council or subcommittee for, for this?
Possibly, or I don't know. Um, you know, I can always circulate for ideas with, you know, WAC and, and contact them as well, or also zoning board members, or invite people to your, you know, upcoming meetings, um, I don't know if we, if I need to create a, a formal working group.
Well, we, we have a, we have some time before we have to decide that, but, um, it sounds like you want to take your first swing at this, and then you report back to the board at the next meeting or the meeting after that, whenever you're ready. And then we can, that can spur on some conversation about where we wanna go with the bylaw.
Yes, yep, cuz I think, so we don't know yet if there is going to be a fall town meeting, um, there is a fall town, or special town meeting scheduled, um, for the school, elementary school project. That's October eighteen, so everyone should put that in your calendar. Um, so not until in September will the select board make an official decision and determination if there's going to be an additional one in November. Um, or, you know, they'll review all articles and get the warrant set for October, and then look to see if there's anything for November, but the general recommendation is, you know, always when we have this fall town meeting, the recommendation is what articles cannot wait until annual town meeting in the spring. The, we used to only have one town meeting a year in the spring, so usually the recommendation is try to get everything, you know, zoning on for annual town meeting, that's where we have a greater turnout when we're reviewing the whole budget. But if there's something we need to bring forward sooner, then we submit that to the select board for them to, to decide at that time, but my recommendation is the solar is something we work on, and then, then, you know, once you finish your kind of work session on, then we put it aside, um, until, you know, if it's not until spring, then we'll pick it up in the spring again to do your official public hearing, but I think that's something we could kind of work out fairly quickly, um, because when this, if the school project, you know, goes forward, that will also require a planning board review of, you know, the site plan review, that's when you'll be reviewing the details of the project, the actual, you know, construction permitting plans, there'll also be, um, a hearing with the conservation commission. Um, so what we've done with other part, um, town projects before to try to help, you know, expedite the process, you might need at the same, we might coordinate a meeting at the same time with planning board and conservation commission, so you could hear, um, hear the issues, so that's expected, um, this fall, that the Hamlin School project will come before you, so that's, you know, something that's coming up in the fall. Um, another zoning amendment that I will take up a significant amount of time is there's, there was, um, earlier this year in January, um, the state legislator and the governor signed a new what's referred to as an economic development bond bill, and that included, um, housing, a housing requirement for all communities that, um, have an MBTA station to adopt zoning, um, that allows multifamily housing by right, um, for a, a district in town of a reasonable size. So I think that's gonna take a lot of work, um, so that's why I'm suggesting work on the solar now, and then set it aside, cuz I think will take us quite a while to, first, we have to learn more about this, we're also waiting for state guidance, guidance on some of the, um, requirements in this bill, for example, how do you, you know, what's the reasonable size, what's the distance from the station? Um, stuff like that, um, so I think that's something we'll need to work on over the fall, um, and that you would want to bring forward and be ready for, um, annual town meeting. So to submit that in January, you know, doesn't, doesn't have to be in a final form in January, but you wanna be at least have reviewed it, talked about it, discussed it, look at where are you gonna propose this zoning change, so you might have to make, you know, a map amendment and then a detailed zoning bylaw change.
Rob, did you have a question?
Just a couple of comments and a, and a question for Abby, um, you know, for Ellen and Kate, as you come in, while January based on the timeline that Kate, uh, Abby laid out, um, sounds like a long way off, um, it's really a sprint between here and there, um, because as you get into, um, you know, starting to enroll public support for whatever it is you end up proposing, you need to sort of build that, because the bylaw needs to pass by that two thirds vote at town meeting, so, um, you know, Abby, as you look, you know, so you mentioned this, um, you know, need for a change relative to the MBTA stations, as you look down the road, are there other things that, you know, from a volume standpoint that help you shape what you think the right workload is for the, the planning board, and, you know, as we have acknowledged before, the amount of volume that comes through the choke point of view?
Yeah, I, I, I think, um, you know, trying to work on the solar right away, while the timing is a little bit late, is a good idea, because I do think the planning board will need to, you'll get, once the fall comes, so it's off, you know, the summer is your lightest kind of workload in terms of applications, cuz a lot of projects are underway under construction now. Um, but if there is a fall town meeting, it's usually around Labor Day is when you have to submit that to the newspaper and kind of be ready to go right into public hearings, right through the FinCon process. And then you'll, if there's a town meeting in the fall, it ends, and then usually the warrant opens in December and closes in January. So January is kind of that deadline of when you wanna be ready to go forward and jump right into that town meeting, public hearing process, so I think, um, in the fall, you'll be busy with, um, other projects that are coming down the pipeline is, um, you know, also consistent with your comprehensive plan about finishing up development at, um, University Station. There are two parcels left undeveloped, um, and we have interest in, um, redevelopment at the top of the hill, there was, if you recall, there is a last spot next to the Citizens Bank, um, the master development plan calls for, I forget if it was a two or four story, um, building there. Um, so when an application comes forward, that will come to you as a, a full review, project development review, that's when you'll review the full site plans, um, and architectural plans for that, so I, I expect that to come in the next few months as well. Um, as I mentioned, you, you'll have the Hamlin School, um, Brigham and Women's, um, that construction will be starting soon for the Phase Two, but they are looking at, um, they do have to come back to you to, um, update their special permit on the, um, chemical storage. Uh, but they're also, they are trying to have, um, they're looking into solar on the roof of the parking garage, so that will come to you as well too, it's not a major project, but it is something that, um, is an update to the last review that you did at the parking garage, to look at the solars on the roof there. Um, and then, another one is, um, that they've talked about it a little bit before, a few months ago, there's, um, there was an earlier response to, um, the RFP that the town put out related to the, um, re, redevelopment of the historic Obed Baker House on High Street. Um, so we're still working with that developer, he's trying to refine his proposal. Um, so the next step would be for him to, you know, nail down his, his plan, and then bring that forward to the select board. So the select board would need to decide if that meets the, you know, fulfills and fulfills the response and requirements of the RFP that was issued, you know, a while ago. So they would review that, they would need to review that, and then give it the okay to move forward with permitting, um, cuz then that would also need planning board and conservation review. Um, so right now, the proposal would require a zoning change as well, so the recommendation usually is to go through the you know, town meeting just happened, so we don't know when the next one will be, but you, for something like that, it's usually recommended that the plans are fully designed, embedded, goes through the planning board permitting process, and then to town meeting for the zoning amendment, so that's something that if that goes forward, that would come to you as well likely in the fall, if, if it gets the green light from this left foot.
So just listening to what you've just said, there's probably three bylaw, you know, warrant articles right there. Right, I don't know what the high watermark is for the number, any number that has been submitted in years past, but, you know, the, some of these could be lengthy and, and developing.
Right, you've, um, you know, some years you've had about ten articles, um, but some of them are, you know, more extensive than others. Um, you know, like we just saw the, um, the firearm. The firearms one, you know, that was a good article, it was, you know, proactive, but it wasn't a whole lot of. Research that had to go into it, you you were just making some minor edits, but some of the ones that require a lot of. Research background and kind of pulling it all together, vetting with the planning board, possibly working with other boards, that's something that takes. You know, time, so I think if if the Obed Baker one, the multifamily housing one that was. You know, it will be required by the state, like, you know, all municipalities will need to have zoning. That allows multifamily by right, so that is something we want to do sooner rather than later. Because you could get an application in and you want to have zoning in place. Before you get an application in, so that's something I think will take a lot of time. Another, you know, one of the recommendations that was in the comprehensive plan in the Sustainability and Resiliency Section. Talked about a climate action and resiliency plan. And that recommendation, the purpose of that was to try to pull together a plan that really evaluates. You know, where Westwood is today and identifies existing gaps and makes recommendations for. Implementing actions, you know, specific actions that the town can take to. You know, combat climate action. There was a grant recently. You know, opened with the state, I was, you know, at your last meeting, I mentioned that I was trying to submit a grant. You know, in response to that, but I wasn't able to get that in on time. I has, I was also trying to work with Tom Philman, he's our energy manager. He let me know that he is working on an energy audit right now. And that was also one of the recommendations in the sustainability section of the plan is to have. An evaluation of, you know, all of our town municipal buildings with the specific, you know. How energy efficient is it? So he's working on that. Over the next few, you know, few months, several months, he's working on that. The, the plan also talked about, the comprehensive plan also talked about. Or I think when we were working on, there, there was a couple that were suggested as role models. That included Dedham's and Ipswich, I had that in your packet, I don't know if you had a chance to review. But I think we need to, when I was working on the grant, I was getting a little bit overwhelmed at trying to figure out exactly what we want to do. So I think what we need to do is, you know, as a board, as a town, is figure out, you know, what is our scope? What do you want to do and then how are we going to accomplish that? Because some of the plans, the Dedham and the Ipswich one that we've worked at, that I looked at, were quite extensive. I know that the Dedham one did receive a grant in the amount of around a hundred thousand dollars. And they, so they had a consultant to do the, you know, the writing and the professional expertise of that, so. If we're going to do something that is extensive, we may, you know, need some extra support from a professional consultant or, you know. I want to help a little bit more with that. So that's something for us to think about how to move that forward.
And and Abby too, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but am I right in thinking that once we do complete? The CARP, which I forget what that all stands for. Would we then be eligible for other grants in trying to accomplish some of those goals, but you have to have that done first, is that right?
No, I don't, not for the Climate Action and Resiliency Plan. We did recently, I think, in the comprehensive plan, we talked about completing the. Vulnerability Preparedness Process, and we have, so we have finished that, so we are eligible for grants. So we, we could have applied for this grant that. Was just open, but. We weren't able to apply for it, but if we can work on something to get ready for the next time. A grant becomes available, we are eligible, so we can submit a grant application.
Great, thank you.
I, I think this is very important that we may move forward with our resiliency and sustainability plan. In fact, you look at the. At the one in Ipswich, how does that one, this are almost like twenty years old already? And and it's, and it's a lot to the plan, there's more than just saying, well, we got to go out and educate people, we got to do this, we got to do that. It's, it's a lot of really technical stuff that needs to be done. Be given that we'll have, you know, increased storms and flooding threats. We need to really have engineers review the the whole town as far as its topography. And its vulnerability to flooding, especially our streets and various buildings and, you know, what would happen? You saw what happened in Norwood, and I I noticed that one photograph where they had, where they, you know, it just rained for a couple hours. Really heavily and and of course, it completely knocked out. Norwood Hospital, if you look at the photograph they had, one was the central fire station at Norwood Hospital. And there was flooding on either side of it, so that, you know, they. There are real dangers here when things like that happen, that emergency equipment can't get through to where it's needed. There are all sorts of things that can happen, so the study needs to look at what are our vulnerabilities as far as flooding? And what do we need to do to, you know, to, you know, locate those key areas where we might need improvements? We might need to raise a roadway somewhere, we might definitely might need to. Upgrade the stormwater system, so we need that study to look at the stormwater system and tell us, is it adequate, is it inadequate? And of course, we also have. At the same time, we we've been under these mandates from the federal government, from the EPA. To make sure we have necessary quality of of water treatment in our stormwater system. So we can do two things at once, make sure our stormwater system can handle the volume, also that it's, it's. Putting clean water into our streams and and rivers and not. Polluting them, so that that definitely involves consultants. And that's why I think we need to move forward, get the scope laid out and and then just start to, you know, figure out, okay. You know, where, where, where's the funding going to come from? As far as the funding is concerned, I think. Speaking to the, you know, like the select board on this one is, we we save three, you know, well. We saved a lot of money by doing the comprehensive plan in-house, town of Lexington. They're probably still doing this and they hired consultants for three hundred and three thousand dollars. So that's really the amount of money that we save by doing it in-house. So to get a hundred thousand dollars of the money that we save and use it for this resiliency plan. I think is, is the way to look at it, and I think we need to to go with that.
So Abby, what aspect of the comp plan did you say was completed, allowing you to apply for? The emergency preparedness aspect?
We, it was in the sustainability section, there was an action item to complete the. Massachusetts Vulnerability Preparedness Certification, so it was a state certification.
All right, so more work to be done immediately, I see that. Someone from We Act Julie Gervais has indicated that they would like to collaborate with the planning board on a climate action and resiliency plan. If there's a subcommittee forum, they'd like to participate. And she also indicates, Ellen, this might be for you, We Act usually every third Thursday at seven thirty. All right, so Abby, you brought us up to date on all things planning department, right?
Those are the major items that I think will be taking up a lot of your time and things to think about over the next year.
I think it would be very surprising that the select board would find reason to have a town meeting. In October and then and also November, I think that's putting Dottie Powers and her department through an awful lot of work. Three weeks apart or whatever it might be. Unless there is a pressing need for a select board article, because I don't think we have any articles here that are desperate to be heard in in the fall. So I don't think we would be driving that action. I think it would be the select board, we might be able to piggyback onto something if they, if they do elect for a town meeting, but I just don't see it happening. But we'll find out in September, if, right, September, we'll find out if there's a November.
Yes, they have to make a decision, I think the charter says mid, mid-September or by the end of September certainly.
All right, we had, what's next, was it minutes from our last meeting? I think those were submitted to us, I don't see the date here, sorry. So. Are Kate and Ellen, they weren't at the meeting, so they're not eligible to vote on that, but we do have. Three members who were there, that, so. Rob, Dave, did you have a chance to review them? The minutes that were submitted?
So yes, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
And I, Dakota in the background will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and I had already mentioned a typo I found for additional comments, and I've already mentioned it to Abby. Where the word curbing, it was curing, the B was omitted. In the staff comment section, so we have a motion and a second, any further discussion in addition to what I just added? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Gotti?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Miss Lynn and Miss Rawlings are.
Staying.
Staining, and I vote yes as well. So the minutes pass. Anything else, Abby? Or not seeing?
The next or summer meetings, if. Have a chance to look at. June eighth, June twenty ninth. July twentieth. August seventeenth. August thirty first. And September twenty first, do those dates work for everyone?
Abby, can I just confirm that those are the same dates? You haven't changed the dates that you circulated?
Right, yeah, I sent them to you and Ellen, they're the same dates. The only one, you know, I want to wait to hear from FinCom, they'll usually put out their schedule at some point over the summer. So it's possible that their September. Date might conflict with ours, so as that gets closer, well, once we hear from FinCom, we can court in the town meeting schedule, we may have to. Then look at our full fall till December schedule.
Great, those dates work for me, thank you.
Abby, the only change that I see is the inclusion of two meetings in August, whereas we typically have only had one. But we're only having one, you're suggesting in September on the twenty first?
Well, I was, because usually we'd meet after, right after Labor Day, but I think it was, it's Rosh Hashanah.
Right, yes.
So I thought I'd move it up to August to try to just keep it even pace between meetings.
Okay, so is everyone okay at this point with those dates? Writing in that August one. Thirty first. Okay, so I think we have our summer schedule and Abby, in the past, we've, we've, if we have had no hearings or no applications. We may drop a meeting, depending on our workload, but we do have a lot of zoning. Things to discuss potentially with the solar. All right, well, I think that is good for our summer. Does anyone have anything else to add? Any questions about the the schedule or? What we've laid out? No? Okay. Abby, I don't see anything else on the, on the menu.
Add that I need to collect your signatures, because we usually send it to the registry in Land Court. So if anyone, you know, it's not a rush, we don't have anything that you need to sign right now, but in the next. Week or two, if you are able to stop by Carby Street, I'll, I'll collect your signature on these forms that I'll then. Send to the registry so that your signature is on file with them.
Do you have a schedule at Carby Street when you're there? Monday through Friday now, or?
Yes, we are back full-time, so if you want to just, you know, send me a message, myself or Karen, when you're coming and I can just. Make sure I'm, you know, physically there at that moment and I can meet you upfront.
Okay, and you need that from everyone, not just Kate and Ellen.
Yeah, it should be all board members.
Okay, and the last thing that I think we need to at least broach is. A, finding a time for a joint meeting with the select board to appoint a replacement for Rob. So what is the plan there, Abby?
Right, so I'd want to check on the select board's meeting schedule, but yes, we would. Usually the planning board members, you would attend a select board meeting at a time that works for all of you. You know, you'd want to leave enough time so that we could put out a search and, you know, advertise and get the word out about the position. What we did last time was, you know, ask people to submit a resume and a cover letter and then. You know, in you, last time interviewed at, you know, a meeting, a joint meeting of the planning board and select board, but. You know, that exact problem of, you know, how you will select them, it is a, the charter says a vote of. The select board and planning board to appoint a new person to serve until the next election.
This, even though the seat has, was it two years remaining? It would be only for one year till next April, when the next election would be held.
Right, and then they would run for the remainder of the term, which would be.
So they would run one, a one-year seat? Okay. And is the hope to have a meeting sometime by the end of June with the select board?
I think so, if that's, I don't know the select board's meeting schedule, I don't remember it, I'm looking at Rob right now, I don't know if you, if you have a meeting at the end of June. Or sometime in July.
You're muted, Rob.
Yes, we definitely have one, I'm just drawing a blank on the.
I mean, usually we would avoid, you know, the week of Fourth of July is not the best time for meetings, so, you know, either before the end of June or. You know, maybe mid-July or so.
But you're not seeing a reason to hurry to fill the seat? Meaning, let's get it done by June fifteenth or June thirtieth?
No, you don't have any other active applications at this time, you don't have. Yeah, you don't have any public hearings scheduled for your next meeting, so it's not imminent.
All right, and if necessary, we obviously do have our alternates, who, that's why we created those roles.
For planning purposes, June twenty first, July twelfth, and August ninth. Are the next three, we've got a June seventh, obviously we're not doing that, so.
All right, Abby, how much in advance did we post this from last January, when we had the similar situation?
I think it was about, about three weeks, I think we had at least a solid three weeks, maybe even four.
So if we can get a posting out there by June first, we can be ready by June twenty first select board meeting. Assuming that the rest of this board can can make that meeting. And assuming it works with the select board's schedule on that meeting date.
Right, I mean, we could use, you know, the same ad that seemed to work well last time, but if June, if June twenty first. Works for people, for you and the select board.
Maybe what we should do, we already have our meeting on June twenty first. That's when we have a meeting.
No, yours is June.
Sorry, that's September, I'm looking at the wrong month, I apologize. So we're the twenty ninth, so just a quick poll of this board, since it's crucial that we're a part of this. Is this board available, Kate, Ellen, Dave, on June twenty first, if that's the date that the select board chooses to do this?
Yes.
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 And I'm, I'm available as well, so Abby, you can kind of go forward and. And I'm, I'm available as well, so Abby, you can kind of go forward and discuss things with Chris Coleman and. Figure out what works best, but at least on that date in particular, we are available.
All right, great, thank you, I'll, I'll work towards that, I'll contact, you know, Town Administrator's Office for that.
Okay. Seeing no other items on the agenda?
I do, I, I just, I, it would be, it would be awful to. End the night and now say thank you to Dave Atkins for his service as Chair of the Board for this past year. It was an amazing year and I paid an awful lot of attention to the meetings that you ran. And I'm very grateful for the service that you did for the Board and for the town during your time as Chair.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Dave.
Thanks, dude.
All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
A motion is second.
Like a true recent chair, Dave.
Do a roll call vote, Kate?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
I vote yes, we're adjourned, thank you very much.
Have a good night, everybody.